Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Yes, good evening. Roll call.
Ms. Rata, can we check your volume again? We can't hear you. It's the day of the tech stuff. I heard you before. Are you connected? Just make sure that your headphones are connected to the Zoom itself? No, okay, so we're just gonna go down to the corner where the microphone is. And just make sure that your headphones are, the microphone is connected. We push the carrot under, so select a microphone, make sure that the headphone speakers or the... There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I'll just set my ear...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Rata.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Here.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Here.
President Triggs?
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting? No. No, I apologize. Please stand for the flag. Do the flag first, correct?
Notice of meeting first.
Notice first?
Notice of meeting, yes.
Notice of meeting. Sorry, Dr. C. Getting your exercise. Notice of meeting. Please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 8, 2021. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education. Thank you. Now, please stand for the flags move.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. This weekend, the West Orange Public Schools lost an esteemed colleague and terrific person in Mr. Bob Kuzmarsky, Gregory School Physical Education Teacher. Please join me in sending thoughts and condolences to the Gregory School community, the Kuzmarsky family, and all those who worked with Mr. Kuzmarsky and knew him well. As a school community, we mourn this loss together, but may be comforted by the many memories and countless young lives which he touched in his time as a West Orange professional educator. Please join the board in a moment of silence in his memory and in his honor. Thank you. All right. Again, good evening, everyone. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of February 3rd and 8th? Who was that?
Yeah, Mrs. Cunningham.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Flowers, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mrs. Rata.
Yes.
Mrs. Merkinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Triggs?
Yes. Thank you. And now for our student liaison report. Ms. Celestin?
Hi, everyone. We actually not have anything.
Okay, all right. How'd you enjoy the snow today?
I actually did not. I wanted to go get boba with my sister, and I couldn't because it was snowing.
Oh. All right, so that's your report. We thank you very much. All right, and we're going to turn everything over to our esteemed Superintendent, Dr. Cascone, and we're gonna have our budget presentation with Dr. Cascone, Mrs. Flowers and Mrs. Flores. Dr. Cascone?
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, board members. Am I, can you hear me? Yeah. Board members and colleagues, and of course, members of the community who've joined us tonight, we do have, in fact, a budget presentation. But before we transition into that, I just had a few miscellaneous items on which I wanted to make some remarks. First, today, the district held an afternoon staff development day. And this session was entirely focused on accurately assessing where all of our students are relative to the course and grade level benchmarks and standards, developing targeted individualized intervention plans, as well as looking forward to next year for any curricular implications. At the next Board of Education meeting, Mr. Mendez, as well as members of the curriculum team will present the more in-depth on the schedule for the day today, as well as key takeaways. The curriculum team has also begun preparation and planning for summer academic support programs to assist students in preparing them for next school year. And so I just want to commend Mr. Mendez and the curriculum team and all of our staff for really being proactive about making this a focus and really kind of refocusing the district-level conversations internally on instruction, on assessment, and the progress of our students. So I look forward to hearing about how the day went and those key takeaways. My items are not necessarily related anyway, but they're all just items which I felt were important to speak to the community about. So a community member reached out to me last week to bring to my attention an article that was published in a mainstream periodical referencing a dangerous uptick in discrimination and even hate crimes against Asian Americans. And so I appreciate that community member bringing that to my attention. So I just wanted to reiterate the district's strong stance against and condemnation of any form of discrimination or hate speech crimes and express the district's support, mine and the district's support and solidarity for the Asian American members of our community and of our state and country. I'd like to put in a plug for the Inspirational Voices Virtual Coral Festival, which will premiere on February 25 at 7 o'clock. You're gonna notice a solo from the very own Doc C. This may be the least important reason to watch as our amazing students perform under the tutelage of our fantastic coral teachers. But I'm not kidding, they actually wrote me into doing solo. So you get to see a different side of Doc C there doing all singing, showing off the pipes, I guess. I'd like to wish all of our Jewish community members celebrating Purim on Sunday, I'm sorry, on sundown on Thursday and into Friday, a very joyous holiday. And finally, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the reopening of our schools. As you're all aware, our pre-K through 12 special ed and K-3 regular education students have begun the hybrid cohort program. And our high school is scheduled to begin next Monday, and we are on target to do that. Outside the disruptions from the winter weather, all reports are that the implementation is going smoothly. And as you may be aware, the regional positivity rate is trending in the right direction. Last week, it was 8.33, and the total seven-day tally of cases in West Orange last week was 81, which is actually 28 cases lower than it was in November when we first postponed the implementation of our hybrid cohort model. I just recently received the county situational awareness report, you know, relative to COVID, and there were 190 cases in the County of Essex today with 86 of those in Newark. So by all accounts, our numbers are going in the right direction. That being said, I did reach out directly to the West Orange Department of Health and our district physician at the end of last week to calibrate my own understanding, as a medical and public health layman, because that's what I am, as to the ongoing prudence and advisability of continuing to implement our hybrid cohort model in the limited occupancy that we are. And I'm happy to report that the district has the full support of both the West Orange Department of Health as well as the district position to continue to operate in this manner. And by this matter, what do I mean by that? One is that limited occupancy that we're talking about and that strict adherence to the CDC mitigation strategies such as universal mask-wearing, adequate and conservative social distancing, and all the contact tracing and things that we're doing of that nature, as well as the fact that, again, we've staggered it and we're coming in in small numbers. And so they felt confident that we could continue to do that, and I'm going to defer to their expertise on that, because when I calibrate that, that support, when I get that support, and then I hold that side by side with everything else I'm seeing. Now, we were told, Dr. Fauci, remember this back in, I believe it was in, at the town hall, I said, well, you know, Dr. Fauci says, well, it's gonna, we're in for the worst. It's gonna get worse in the upcoming weeks. But Dr. Fauci was wrong. It actually has not gotten worse, not in our township, not in our county, and not in our state. And that's not throwing shade at Dr. Fauci. I'm glad he was wrong. But he was wrong. It's absolutely no worse now. In fact, the cases are lower now, the seven-day tally than they were in November. And so when I put those things side by side, along with our conservative approach and the fact that we're gonna continue to monitor on an ongoing basis, I do ultimately feel comfortable. We've taken our medically fragile staff and those staff members who care for medically fragile family members, we've afforded them accommodations until such time that they can be vaccinated. And so we've taken a very proactive and conservative approach and therefore feel comfortable operating. But of course, we'll continue to monitor that. Now, now we have begun the hybrid model. I know that parents are eager to see when we can get our students in more days. And I will tell you, there are no immediate plans to increase the number of days on site. I think we've had enough difficulties with this winter weather getting into any kind of a rhythm. And I do think it's important for us to get into a rhythm before making any kind of pivots. I think one of the other challenges you need to be aware of is that our hybrid cohort model is built so that if 25%, 30%, 40%, or all of the students who are currently virtual switched, a parent said, we want them to come in, which under board policy they can with adequate notice, that we'd be able to do that. The risk we run of starting to combine cohorts is that as people start to come back, we'd have to reschedule. But we're not, we're not saying it's not happening, but right now, we want to get into a bit of a rhythm. Let's get the high school up and running. But I do, and I have tasked my internal team with starting to think about what that would look like if we were to do it. I will also tell you that the recent CDC guidelines, I know that there are some different organizations out there, and maybe not every educational institution is abiding by that six-foot social distance. But I would tell you, the most recent guidance document that I read from the CDC, the six-foot guidance between folks in the school is still recommended by the CDC and by the roadback documents. So that is what we are gonna continue to adhere to. And finally, further inquiring minds are starting to wonder what the status instruction will be in September. And while we were just really beginning to plan for next September, I can tell you that the concept is that, provided that the state allowed us to still do this and that a virtual option was still afforded to students, and there's no guarantee that that's gonna be the case, but my sense is that will be, that there will still be a virtual option for students who want to take that. And they will be afforded that. However, the intention would be to run two parallel cohorts, a virtual cohort and an onsite cohort that was in at least four days a week and had dedicated onsite teachers. So we didn't have teachers serving two different clients, if you will. Just in the beginning, preliminary stages, and I say four days minimum because under CDC guidelines, we might still need that fifth day to ensure that we are adequately deep cleaning our buildings and giving an opportunity for our buildings to, you know, to basically be unoccupied for a day. It's not a guarantee that that will be necessary. I'm just putting it in there as a possibility. But we are beginning to think about that, and that is, that is the overall concept right now, is what we'd be trying to offer. Now, that is logistically complex, but if we start early enough in our planning in that, we should be able to accomplish it. However, what that will require is that sooner rather than later, the key is that we understand from our parent constituents what they would intend to do and that they're fairly certain about what they would want to do. We can't wait until two or three weeks before the beginning of the school year to understand if you want to be a virtual-only or an onsite-only, you know, student. We need to know that in advance, because that's gonna drive our staffing, it's gonna drive our scheduling, it's gonna drive everything. So the sooner we were able to establish those cohorts, the better. But we've yet to even receive guidance from the state on what next year would look like. And as we know, the pandemic continues to be, you know, in some dynamic state. And obviously, we don't know exactly what that'll look like come September. So we're planning for two parallel cohorts. And the last piece is, I just want to echo Ms. Triggs' scales remarks from the beginning of the meeting, which is like to echo my condolences for the passing of Mr. Kuzmarsky, Gregory PE teacher, beloved member of our school community. Our heart goes out to his family, to the Gregory School community, again, everyone who had the pleasure of working with Mr. Kuzmarsky and knowing him. And that, Madam President, concludes the introduction to my report. And at this time, I would turn it over to Ms. Flowers and Mrs. Flores. I will, you know, I'll kinda, I'll play kind of the sixth man off the bench for the, for the budget meeting, a budget presentation, rather. But at this time, first, I'd like to thank them for their work in putting this present together. Presentation together, and I would turn the floor over to them for a budget presentation. Oh, wait a second. I was gonna, I was gonna give a little preface, wasn't I? Sorry, yes, the preface. So before, before they get into the, you know, kind of the nuts and bolts of this presentation, I apologize. I just wanted to kind of set the context for, for, you know, for the board and also for the community of like what, what, you know, where we are in the timeline and kind of what the purpose of this presentation is. This is not a, this is not a complete proposed budget. It's not a budget that's going to give you granular details relative to either proposed cuts, although there are some cuts that'll be noted in there that we've done off the top. Really, what it is, is it's, it contains much similar information to that which was presented by the board at the Budget Town Hall in December. And it really just aims to lay out for the public the projected expense side and the projected revenue side. Now, the challenge of doing either of those is that very little of that is known definitively at this point in time. We should know our state aid soon, but we don't yet. We've, we've, we've gotten estimates from our brokers about the, the cost of the increases in benefits, but that's not set in stone. And of course, the, the most, the most important variable at this point in time is the percentage at which the budget will be created. In other words, will it be 0%, budget, which no additional taxes are levied? Will it go to cap at 2%? Because that will determine the degree to, the deficit which the district will have to close. And so this is really an opportunity to present some macro pieces for the public and to understand with these projected costs and revenues what the respective deficit that we would need to close and then essentially what that would translate into, into positions, jobs. And, and, and really, in the wake of this meeting, and I'm going, getting, I'm getting there. In the wake of this meeting, the board would come to some consensus as to what they were comfortable with. We have a budget work session on the 3rd of March. The administration would be prepared on the 3rd of March, armed with this understanding of the percentage to provide a preliminary proposed cut list that would include position types and things of that nature. Opportunity to be presented in public on the 3rd. And then on the 18th, we would take whatever feedback came in. If we had to go back to the drawing board between the 3rd and the 18th, and then at the 18th is when we would present the proposed budget which would go to the county. We continue to work on some things. We continue to negotiate, try and negotiate transportation and try and find some additional cost savings. But this will give you the macro pieces and lay those out. So with that setting of the table, if you will, I now turn it over to Mrs. Flores. I'm sorry, Ms. Flores. I get confused because both, both their names mean flowers. Ms. Flowers, of course, and then Mrs. Flores. So it's Ms. Flowers, Mrs. Flores, the two flowers. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, well, Ms. Flores, Ms. Flowers, you have to unmute yourself first. Okay, okay. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cascone. Okay, so, Maureen, do you advance, you advance the slides, yes?
Yes, feel free to just say next or click or whatever you need to say.
Okay, yes, thank you. You'll go to the next slide. Good evening to everyone. Okay, so on our proposed expenditures for the 2021-22 budget, we have salaries. This includes all salaries in all departments. This is not, the percentage is not unique to West Orange. This is most likely the percentage you will see statewide. These salaries include projected increases, guide movements. Most districts have guide movements where staff will receive an increase based on level of education. Employees can move across the guy salary, across the salary guys. We have BA degree plus 15 credits or BA plus 30 credits, master's degree, et cetera. And here in West Orange, we have eight levels of guide changes. So when a staff member completes the needed credits, they submit the necessary information for verification and approval of adjustment to their salary. So we have budgeted for those changes along with longevity amounts. Employees who have been here for said number of years will qualify for longevity, and we have included that in this salary line. Next, we have benefits. We have budgeted for the anticipated increases for medical, dental, and prescription. Additionally, we have budgeted for workers' compensation, social security, unemployment, and pension benefits that we need to make for non-certificated members and so forth. Special education, including transportation. There are no salaries included in this line, only CST-related services, special programs, extraordinary services, and the transportation for the special ed students makes up this number. Then we have instruction and support, and the majority of this money is basically for supplies, for operation, maintenance, security. We have contracted services and repairs, heat and electric, and ESIP payments for transportation. This is strictly for general ed only. And we include the non-public student transportation and aid in lieu of transportation, where parents will receive a check for a maximum of $1,000 for transporting their child to and from school, which is paid over two payments based on the attendance, up to $500 in January and up to $500 in June. And also in this line, we have funds for athletics to and from and courtesy bus. For charter school, we have 14 students attending six different schools, so we budgeted for those. The capital outlay, this is where we budget for our major construction projects and the equipment that is valued $2,000 or more. And also, we have SDA, the School Development Authority Assessment for Previous Funding that we receive from the state on construction projects. And now we have to pay an assessment because we receive those funds. There's an area that we might be able to reduce as anticipated, receiving additional funding through the ESSR to grants. So there are some items that we'll be looking at to be able to be paid through the ESSR grants. So we should be able to see some cost savings in this capital outlay line. And then we have the special revenue and debt service, so that our proposed total is $177,823,032. Next slide, please, Maureen. So for major proposed increases, we have the salaries. All bargaining units are in negotiations, and so this number includes training level changes and longevity. For the benefits, we have budgeted for the projections for increases for 11% medical, 14% for prescription, and 9% for dental per our broker from Brown and Brown. These percentages were very preliminary. We are still in discussion with our broker to determine potential increases in cost for the district due to reduced employee contributions as a result of the new plan required by Chapter 44. In transportation, we have had a longstanding relationship with Huntington County ESC. They have provided transportation for our district over the years dating back to when Mr. Jerry Tarnoff was superintendent. Mr. Tarnoff actually reached out to me and Dr. Cascone, letting us know that we've been operating on a gentleman's agreement in the past. But today, we are facing major increase in challenges of increased costs that Huntington County ESC can no longer absorb. So in past discussions, they have expressed that they can't keep the rates as they currently are and that they would need to increase in order to sustain and, and provide us services. So that's where the 26% came in. We're presently meeting with Huntington County ESC to negotiate, and hopefully we'll be able to negotiate a reduced rate and over, over this budget and upcoming budgets. Then we have the out-of-district tuition, which is an increase of 8%. Next slide, please. Okay, so for our 2021-22 budget scenarios, we're taking these scenarios in consideration based on our state aid allocations. We anticipate receiving flat funding, but we don't know yet what that means in terms of when the announcement of state aid was made. We received additional cut of $1.5 million in August of last year. So now we're trying to determine, we haven't yet received notification as to what the flat funding is going to be on the amount that was allocated in March or if it's gonna be based on the additional $1.5 million that was cut and reduced in August. So we're looking to find out if the amount is reinstated. That's what we have these two side-by-side scenarios. So 0% increase without the $1.5 million would mean 9.5 million in proposed cuts. If the 1.5 million is reinstated, then it would only, at 0%, we would be looking at 0 to the $8 million in proposed cuts. Then we have the 2% increase. Without the 1.5 million being reinstated, we would be looking at $6.7 million in cuts. And with the $1.5 million reinstated, we'd be looking at a $5.2 million proposed cut. So hopefully, we'll be getting our estate allocations shortly. Next slide, please. So available bank cap. This is not additional funding received. Bank cap is a means of authorization for the district to budget above the 2% tax levy cap by board approval for eligible adjustments such as healthcare costs and enrollment increases. In previous years, when the district does not go to 2%, the difference is banked and can be appropriated in future budgets over the next three school years, which again allows the district to increase, increase the tax levy above the 2% by whatever the needed and board-approved amount is. During last year's budget presentation, for the final budget presentation in May, Mr. Calavano, the former BA, and Dr. Cascone called attention to the efforts of the administration and the board to maintain fiscal responsibility to the municipal taxpayers while embarking on the uncharted financial waters where potential massive losses of state aid was on the horizon. In last year's budget, we had the availability to use approximately an additional $4.7 million in banked cap and raise our baseline to poise and set us up to withstand potential cuts that undoubtedly and notably was coming down the pipe. Today, we are faced with those same concerns. We are in a budget structural deficit, and we have approximately still $4.7 million in banked cap, noting that this current budget that we're preparing, we have $3.4 million, a little over $3.4 million that will be expiring. And again, it's the administration's understanding that the board is not in favor of going above cap or using any of this banked cap, but this is just for informational purposes and something that is noteworthy to the public. So we're not looking to recommend going over banked cap. I just wanted to make this notation. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so now we have the 2% tax levy impact on West Orange homeowners. This is just the breakdown of how the tax levy is calculated over a calendar year. So it's divided between January and June, and then July through December. And you would then see the calendar year 2021 tax levy amount. Next slide, please. So this would be the impact. So this would be the impact. I want to note that we don't have the updated assessed valuations from the township as of yet, so we are utilizing prior year's amounts. So based on the amounts that you see here, if we were to go to 2% tax levy, we would be looking at little under $16 for an average monthly increase. Next slide. And this is just the calculation for the tax levy impact to West Orange homeowners if we were to remain at 0%. So you see the calendar year 2021 tax levy at the bottom there, it's a little less. Next slide, please. And this is what the average monthly increase would be if we were to remain at 0%. So it's a little over $8, so the difference being going 0% or 2% is really about $7 per month that we would see as a homeowner to your savings.
Ms. Flowers?
Yes.
Can you, for those, and it was, it's, the answer was contained in a previous slide about the way it's calculated, but can you explain for the public who might be looking at 0%, saying, wait a second, it's 0%, but there's still an average monthly increase? Can you explain that?
Yes, so the, even though we're staying at 0%, the way the tax levy is collected from homeowners, it's based on the calendar year, where we're looking at a fiscal year for our budget. So really, the reason why you're still seeing an average monthly increase if we remain at 0% is because these are the tax payments that are still being collected for the last year's 2019 budget tax levy. So that's why there's still a small amount that we would be still collecting because of the way the fiscal year versus the calendar year.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, so here we have the cost expenses and additions to budget. Scenario one, again, is based on state aid of the $1.5 million that we lost in August. This would be if it was reinstated. So the budget increase row is our anticipated revenue increase, so tax levy, state aid, and miscellaneous revenue. And then the original expenditures are our projected increase in expenditures for the coming year. So with those anticipated increases for our expenditures for the upcoming year, there would be some required cuts. If we stayed at 0%, that's where the $8 million in deficit comes in. And if we go up to 2%, you would see that we would be able to make additional cuts of about $5 million. We have looked at some additional expenditures, additional charter school expenses, special education staffing, math interventionalists at Edison, and the mechanical units. These are some additional expenditures that we've been considering that we need to add to this budget. I will note that the mechanical units at $640,000. With the ESSER two grant, there are allowable usage for HVAC upgrades, and so we would be able to take that from this particular scenario because we'd be able to pay for the mechanical units using ESSER grant funds, the ESSER two funds. Next slide, please. These are some areas where we've already started to make reductions to the budget. So we just wanted to make those notes to the public so that you can see we've already started looking at some areas where reductions can be made. Next slide, please. Okay, this is just a continuation, again, noting where some additional reductions. And if we don't balance the budget based on additional cuts that we can find, then it comes down to us needing to look at staffing. We've calculated based on $69,000 per staff. That's entry-level salaries and benefits being for single coverage only, and that would be the number of staff members that we would need to consider at 0% versus the 2%. Next slide.
Ms. Flowers, and just for the public's, the board's understanding that, you know, that those numbers of 56 staff lines at 2%, those are somewhat variable, and I would argue more likely variable less because, not the least of which, that's $640,000 for the mechanicals, and we only got guidance from the state today on ESSER two, or else we would have incorporated that. And we also are, obviously, continue to negotiate with the transportation and looking some other transportation savings. So those numbers could fluctuate, you know, by as few as 10 and as many as 20 positions that we might be able to salvage by virtue of other cuts, which we just haven't been able to run down yet.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Casco. And next slide is a continuation showing if we do not receive the revised, or excuse me, the reinstated $1.5 million in state aid, it will require that we've made additional cuts. So if our funding, once we receive our state aid allocations, if it's based on flat funding from the time in August when we lost the $1.5 million, then this is what the scenario would be for us to consider.
Just state those numbers.
I'm sorry, Dr. Casco?
Just state the numbers of positions, please.
Positions, yes, we would be, if we don't get our $1.5 million reinstated and the flat funding is based off that number, we'd be looking at 79 positions if we go up to 2%. And if we remain at 0% tax levy, then it'll be about 120 positions.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes the presentation. I want to thank Anna Flores, thank you very much, and Kathy, and all the work that's gone into this preparation up to this point. We've been having a lot of meetings and really preparing ourselves to make this budget. Some difficult decisions need to be made, and it's a challenging process, but we're in it, and we'll get to the finish line.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers, and Mrs. Loris. And at this time, I would turn it back over to President Rick Skiles.
Thank you, Dr. Casco. Thank you, Ms. Flowers, Ms. Flores. Just for the public's benefit, we were talking about ESSER. So that's the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds that are coming out to help school districts during this time of the pandemic. So we're going to open up to questions for the board. I'm going to start with our board liaison, Andre. Andre, do you have questions? I can't hear you.
One second. I got you. You're good. I got you now. Okay, can you hear me? Yes. Sorry, I was unmuted. No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, all right. You're usually so talkative.
I have to wait.
We love hearing from you.
Yeah, I was going to wait to talk to Olivia because I know she's trying to watch from home right now. I was going to talk to her to see if we could form any questions together rather than just coming half-handed right now.
That's fine. We'll circle back to you later. That's just fine. So we'll move on to the board. Ms. Huerta, questions?
Yo, Andre, for putting me on the spot now, I have to hurry up and get some questions up. No, but, um, so Mike. Um, no, I don't really have any questions right now. I do want to hear from the public, so I'm going to just pass and, you know, I really want to hear from the public and how they feel about it and what their suggestions are. And, you know, just their involvement is, to me, is very important. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Merklinger?
Sure, so I kind of have a few questions just to get some clarity, and it may help some of the questions that the community may have. So just in terms of special revenue and debt service, could you just give a little bit of background or what's included in those items, those line items? Because one's 3.2 million and the other 6.8, so just for clarity about what those two items are.
Ms. Flower?
Anna, will you take that, please? You have all the details. Thank you.
Yes, special revenues is made up of all the grants, Title I, II, III, III immigrant, IV. It has the IDEA, basic IDEA preschool. This year, we have the COVID relief funds in there. We have Perkins. Then you also have all the non-publics, Chapter 192, 193, non-public security, non-public technology. So all the special revenue grants that are kept separate from the base budget is in that special revenue. Debt service is just to pay off our debt. So it's basically made out of tax levy and debt service aid to pay off our debt.
Okay, thank you. So just in terms of the 1.5 state aid, and I know there was some work that was done by previous board members, I believe it was Mr. Charles, had gone back and done a lot of the calculations and worked with the state to get West Orange School District the money that we actually were supposed to be getting all along, and now there's what I want to call back payments, right, that are being added. So the 1.5 that was taken back last year, that's going to be reinstated. Is that in addition to what we should be getting as well? Or is this, is it a wash? Is it just the 1.5 that would have been reinstated from last year that I got?
Yeah, I can actually take that one. All right, go ahead, Ms. Flowers. You want to take it?
All you, Dr. Se.
Okay, so that 1.5 was a percentage of an adjustment sum that had been given for that fiscal year. So they kind of said, here's, and I forget exactly how much was. I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of like three and a half.
Right, yeah.
And then they were like, well, actually, we need 1.5 of that readjustment aid back. Now, if they fund, even if they fund us flat with the 1.5, they're actually still not holding to the agreement, which was to continue to pay additional aid in successive years. If they take, if they don't give the 1.5 back, then they've actually taken a step back in working towards the full readjustment to our local fair share.
Okay, so, okay, so that's what I just want to clear up. So it's, so we're still due that calculated benefit of three, last year was 3.5 or whatnot, plus the 1.5 from.
And more.
And more, okay, that's what I, sure, okay.
Like in other words, this year, this year was, not only, we were supposed to get another readjustment, and that one I'd have to defer to the business office in terms of what the remaining readjustment aid was and how many years that was going to be, that was going to be dispersed, over how many years that was going to be dispersed. I don't know if that's too complex a question if you're prepared for that, but we weren't there yet.
No.
Okay, but given the financial, the financial atmosphere right now and the landscape, it's probably unlikely that we'll see that for this year, I'm assuming. Maybe the full what we're due, so that that three-point whatever that we're still due, plus the 1.5. But the other question I had, but thank you for that, Dr. Se. So just for folks that are new to this, that haven't been, that maybe not are familiar with it, but whether we go to, we stay at 0% or we go up to the 2%, my understanding, and please, I just want to make sure I'm correct on this, is that if we don't go up to the 2%, we run the risk of our budget for next year being based on this year at not being at 2%. So it's based on your, let's say, your future budget. So next year's budget will be based on whatever we do this year. So if we don't use that full 2%, the budget would be based on, would be based on, let's say, we did the 0%. What kind of impact will we see if we didn't go up to the 2%?
Well, right now, we're seeing the impact of years prior where either the district didn't go up to the 2%, and that's how we've accumulated the banked cap.
Right.
When there was a year, I believe, three years ago, when there was money that was given back with taxpayer relief. So it's just really multiplying the deficit and causing, you know, a larger structural deficit to this budget. So you're right, if we don't, the impact is that our baseline, we're building off of a lower baseline. So if we go up to 2% now, then next year, we'll have another 2% on a higher baseline.
Okay, thank you. That was it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. Great questions. Vice President Tony Cliff.
Thank you. Just a few questions. I wanted to know, are any of our debt services coming due for final payments?
I'll have to double-check, but when I recall looking over it, I don't believe we had any coming up this year. I'll double-check that for you, and I can circle back.
Okay, thank you. And. Another question somewhere. I'm just trying to find it. Do we have any idea when the assessed valuations for the taxes are coming in? Or do we expect them soon? Or is, while we're in the process of planning, I just wanted to know if there's, we have any guidance from the township? I know we had a meeting with them not long ago.
We're expecting the response any day now. We have reached out, so we just haven't received the response, but we'll follow up.
Okay, great. And. I think that was all my questions for now.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, so just to, the first thing, not a question, just a statement to level set. We get funds from the state. We know that we'll be getting, you know, a big chunk of our budget from the state. The 1.5 million is really a question of an increase over what we normally have received. And obviously, 1.5, when we're looking at so much we need to cut, that's a, that's a big amount that will make a big difference. But for, just for the record, you know, there's a lot of money that does come in from the state as well, separate from that. And we don't, at the moment, we don't expect that to be cut. Is that correct?
That's, everything we've heard, Mr. Rothstein, is that it would be flat, flat funding.
Okay, flat, or maybe we'll be getting that 1.5.
Well, the 1.5 would be, would be a restoration.
Right.
Right, so is it flat pre-cut or flat post-cut?
Got it. I'm glad all of this is so simple. And then, okay, so then there's basically, I'm going to take banked cap and set that aside for a moment as if it doesn't exist. There's basically four salient points. We're getting the 1.5 million from the state restored or not, and that obviously will impact the budget we have to work with. And the board is deciding to increase the tax levy, the 2% that we're permitted to by law, or not, or somewhere in between. Those are really the salient points, all of those feeding into how much tax is going to be increased or not increased, and how many, ultimately, how many positions we may need to cut from staffing or not cut. Those are really, those are the primary factors that weigh in here.
I would add one other, Mr. Rothstein, which is the collective bargaining, the negotiations that are ongoing with the three bargaining units. And obviously, neither I nor the board would be at liberty to go into any detail about that, but suffice to say where those agreements land would, is a factor as well. It's a factor over which the board, through its negotiations, has some degree of control.
And in the presentation here, we're making some assumptions about that, some guesses, but we acknowledge that, just like all of the other numbers that we don't have definites on at this point in the process, that's another one that's a little bit unclear at the moment, or maybe a lot unclear at the moment. And then as far as the, going back to the, this was on page two, the breakdown of expenditures. These, do these represent any cuts from the previous year's budget? Or is this flat or an increase?
These already include some cuts that were already factored in across lines in the last.
These already include some cuts that were already factored in across lines in the last. Will we? Yes, page 11, where we looked at the reductions to the budget.
Right, right. Okay, got it. Those are factored into page two.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's already significant cuts across the board in, in any number of areas. And basically, what I'm trying to do is find wiggle room, uh, as far as the, uh, staffing goes. And there's very literally no wiggle room at all. We, uh, it's a tough spot to, to be on, obviously. All right, and sorry, bear with me one more moment. Yeah, just, just one. One comment on the cutting of positions, just that there, there's a lot of reasons that even thinking about this is painful. But, but one of the thoughts that occurred to me is that it, it's not really just the, the flat dollar amount for the upcoming year. There's also the cost that was invested in recruiting people to come into the district and then the investment that we made in training them and getting them up to speed. I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to imply anything one way or another, other than just to say that it's more than just what the salary is. The costs of each cutter are higher than just the salary to the district. There's past investment and there's the, the opportunity that our students in our district had in cultivating the talent that we work so hard to bring in here. So I, I, I think my statement in that matter is that this is painful in so many ways to look at. And I don't mean to attack the messenger. You're just speaking truth to us about what's going on here. But, uh, but, uh, yeah, this is, uh, this is a difficult presentation to look at. Thank you for putting it together in a way that's, um, that's so clear and well organized. It's helpful to at least be able to understand what we're looking at, what we're facing these challenges. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein, and thank you to all of my fellow board members. Great questions. This is going to be extremely difficult. I mean, these are the kinds of decisions that do keep you awake at night, realizing that we're going to lose staff. And we, we may be losing programs as well. We, we haven't talked about programs. But, um, this amount represents, um, more than just staff. And as Mr. Rothstein said, the professional development that's been invested in the staff. And I don't envy, um, Dr. Cascone and his administrative staff in making these cuts. It will be our decision as a board to give him a number. And he moves forward from there. I did have two questions. I just wanted a little bit more, um, information on, and the implications of Chapter 44. Ms. Flowers, if you could just explain, um, for the board and for the public, um, what that means, um, what that change means?
Yes, with the, uh, new state plan that came out, the Chapter 44 allowed for employees that were presently in plans, state plans, uh, any health plans to change from the Chapter 78 and roll into these new plans that many employees saw up to about 40% savings. But what that means to the district is that we then have less employee contributions coming into the district. So, uh, we're still waiting and still in conversation with our broker to find out what the overall impact is going to be. But right now, we know that there was a decrease in, uh, we're seeing a decrease in the employee contributions being made. So therefore, we have a larger portion that we'll be paying into, uh, the, the health benefits, uh, this plan.
So this is something we don't have a choice over.
Correct.
This, this is.
Especially when it comes to the new, new hires, this is automatically go into the new plan.
This is not discretionary on our part. Okay, I'm, I'm sure we may come up with some questions, um, later on. But now, we're going to give, um, our community an opportunity to ask questions. And, um, Ms. Gravteza will remind you that it is on agenda items on Ms. Gravteza.
Yes, thank you. Here we go. We are now in the time when we have questions from the public on agenda items only. You're going to use that raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen. And if you're one of our call-in attendees tonight, it is going to be star nine. Again, I remind everyone, you do not have to wait for anyone else to stop talking. We encourage you to raise your hand now. And we will start with Jeremiah Salinas. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record. Jeremiah, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
There we go.
Oh, there you go. Hi.
Okay, hi. Jeremiah Salinas, Seven Crystal Ave. Uh, I have a couple of questions regarding the, uh, the presentation, the budget presentation, well, a, a few things. First of all, it seems that every year that we go over the budget, it's a, a doom and gloom situation where, uh, the first, the, the first place that the district looks into saving or managing the budget is always staff, right? So we're always looking to cut staff. Over the years, uh, we've always discussed, how does West Orange attract new employees? If West Orange is always looking to cut staff every year because of budget constraints? So how is it that we are, you know, how is it that the district is projecting a, a, a solid start for someone that's coming fresh out of college and making sure that we acquire, not only that we acquire, but that we maintain, uh, quality, uh, individuals, uh, in the classrooms, um, for, for our students? A couple of questions, sorry, my doggone crazy. Um, a couple of questions regarding the budget. Number one is, what is the debt that the district has? What is the total amount of the debt that the district has? What can the cap be used for? The money that's been saved over years? How much has the district saved, uh, since the buildings haven't been open, um, to students for a while now? And, uh, how was giving those $3 million back to the community as tax relief coming back to impact, um, the way in which the state now, uh, provides the district with, with funding? If this was a detrimental thing, or, or this was a positive thing? And I understand that the school budget has to be used, uh, in its entirety every school year. But we really haven't seen any improvements, um, when it comes to the, the physical structure of the building. In, 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 in most cases, we're still talking about projects that haven't been completed. When there seems that we, you know, the district receives more money every year, not just from the tax base, but from the, the, uh, the state as well. So if there is an increase every year from the tax base, from the town, and there is an increase from the state, you know, is it, where is, is, is all that going? And I, I don't believe, I hope not, that it's, you know, uh, going all into, uh, saying that it's just toward staff. But there has to be other areas where, where the, the budget could be, uh, get created with and, and, and save taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, uh, we have Tez Wurro. Tez, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you are all breathing through the snow. Thank you for hosting this meeting, so I have two questions.
Tez, I'm sorry, can you just do your name and the, your address for the record?
Absolutely.
Sure.
24 Hines.
Thanks.
Um, okay, so my first question is about the transportation contract. I'm pretty sure I asked this question in the past when the previous administrator was here and we were actually looking, when the whole bus, um, you know, the snow happened and incident, we were considering potentially, uh, other vendors that may have better systems. And I asked about a contract and I thought I heard that there was like a long-term contract. So I'm a little surprised to hear that we've been operating under, uh, gentleman's agreement. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, English is my second language, but that sounds like no contract. And so, A, I'm a little puzzled about that. And B, whether there's a contract or not, I'm still having a hard time understanding as a business person, how can a company so large, serving a district of our size, operate on a loss for so long? And now is imposing a 26% increase? I just need help understanding that. The second question I have is, it's, it's more of an open-ended question is, what, if any, savings have we, uh, realized because of the pandemic, right? Because we're doing virtual learning and we've been forced to pivot and to change certain things? Have we noticed efficiencies, maybe using technology? Or I know we've done some things with HVAC systems. Um, I don't know if they've, um, resulted in perhaps utility savings or anything like that. And so is there something that we can leverage because of the situation we're in that can even lend us into, you know, longer-term savings, not just because of, uh, potential state cuts? That's all. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next, we have Sandra Mordecai. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, thank you. Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. Good evening, everyone. At, at first, um, the budget presentation is not on Wobo. So it's very hard to follow because now the slides are gone. Once your face is showing, now with the clock ticking, there's no way to refer back to the slides in the presentation. That's my first thing. I'm not sure if the, the budget goals were in the slides because it went so fast. Just want to make sure that your budget presentation is in line with the budget goals that were voted on last year. And, uh, Ms. Roto, Tez is absolutely right. It, it's not a gentleman's agreement. There's an agreement between Hunter and SC as well as, as well as the Sussex County Regional Transportation and the District. So I, I'm very alarmed to hear that phrase. I want to make a few suggestions. Of course, it's not going to close the $8 million budget gap. But we did a special ed audit a few years ago. Just want to know if you have reviewed that audit for any efficiencies? I know in the process of doing that audit, we had moved classrooms around, the LLD classrooms, um, and taken them out of Gregory. And so all seven elementaries don't have, uh, you know, specialized classrooms. And a lot of those, the preschool classrooms from Kelly was moved to the preschool. So I just want to know, does every single school building still have a special ed, uh, child study team? Or have you been, um, collapsing services and just having child study teams? Maybe three out of the seven elementaries and then the middle and high? I think there's cost savings there. And I'm saying that as a special ed mom. Another thing that I was looking at, have you looked at the enrollment numbers? Because now that you're virtual slash hybrid, you should be looking at the enrollment numbers to see if maybe you can collapse some of the classrooms. And, um, instead of having 15 kids in a class, you can probably go up to 18 or even 20. And I see that's on the agenda, you're hiring a, two new positions, a routing transportation specialist, as well as an assistant buildings and ground director? Never had an assistant buildings and grounds director before. I would think that you would freeze capital projects and freeze hiring as opposed to letting go of 97 staff or 56 staff, depending on what, you know, whether it's a 0% increase or 2% increase. I, I, I'm just so amazed that you're here again. Um, I, I'd just like to hear back from you, whether or not you've reviewed any of those audits or facility studies or anything like that to realize some cost savings there. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And do we have anyone else at this time who would like to speak on agenda items using the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen? Okay, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza. Uh, Dr. Cascone, would you like to, um, field some of these initially?
Sure, sure. I'm, I'm going to take a run at those which I feel qualified to answer. There, there's some that I might, might punt on and have an opportunity to kind of circle back with some folks and get some additional information. And there's some where I might call upon the more technical expertise of Ms. Flowers and Mrs. Flores. But, you, you know, so let's, I just want to address Mr. Salinas's, um, questions. One of the, one of the things I've said since I came to West Orange is that, is that we, we, we spend about $70, $8 million more than we have to spend, you know? So, so thi- this, this year would represent to some extent a, a, I would argue, close to a one-time correction of that deficit, after which, I, I think barring anything, any kind of catastrophic additional cuts or things that we can't foresee, we would be in, in a relatively decent place and balanced. Where we would not, I would not foresee that we would have to make significant cuts like this moving forward. You know, I know just from last year, it takes time before we're able to, to, to finally understand exactly what the savings are that we're going to realize. And, um, uh, Ms. Ms. Flowers and/or Mrs. Flores, there's a reason for that, right? Where you don't, we don't, we don't bow, we're not able to see where the books shake out until later. And why is that again?
Well, we're still waiting for some of the contracts that have been renegotiated. Uh, we still have some payments out there that we're waiting for to see if we can get some savings. So, and, and once we've seen what our unbudgeted expenses are that we didn't have due to COVID and other situations. So we, right now, we just really don't have those real numbers to be able to, to share right now.
Right. And, and I mean, I think it's safe to say, it's safe to hypothesize that we will, we will, um, realize some savings. We did last year. But I think it's also important to realize that, you know, we can, and I'm going to ask some technical knowledge here, we are able to carry money over into capital maintenance or emergency reserve. Can you, uh, Ms. Flowers, can you speak to the maximum that we can carry over? And then, and then what those funds can be used for?
Yes, so we do have, uh, by law, we are able to, uh, keep 2% of our budget, uh, for budgeted fund surplus. But we, right now, and, and excuse me, was, if we do keep the 2% of our budget to go to surplus, then, or fund balance, then we would be able to use those by board resolution. We would put it into reserve accounts. So we capital reserves, maintenance reserves, or emergency reserves. Uh, we do presently have cap reserve and emergency reserve. And those would be able, uh, those funds would be able to be used for any building improvements that we may have in emergency, uh, type situations, like boilers replacements and other additions to our HVAC systems.
Now, thank you, Ms. Flowers. And there's a tangent here to Mrs. Mr. Salinas's question about projects that haven't been completed. Up until last year, we had nothing.
Nothing, okay.
So there, there was no, there was no money being carried over, which is, which is part, tangent to the premise of that $3 million that went back to the, in taxpayer relief. And Ms. Flowers and/or Mrs. Flores, do you want to talk a little about what the impact of that $3 million that went back in tax relief was?
Well, it created a permanent, that, what, if, because of the relief that we gave back, it cre- creates a structural deficit that we're seeing now. It compounds and it really, it is a permanent loss. There is no making up for, you know, if we remain at 0% and then, you know, give money back, you can't get that back. So now we're looking at what the complexities of dealing with not raising or going to 2% tax levy and then our baseline remaining low. And so now we're trying to recoup those, but you, you never recoup the permanent loss of not going up to 2%. And then to the taxpayers, if I remember correctly, I don't think, you know, if, if it was $40 that most taxpayers saw from that relief that was given, I, I would have to go back and look and get the actual calculation. But I, it wasn't substantial from what I recall.
And thank you, Ms. Flowers. And, and, and bank cap, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if you use bank cap, that becomes, that becomes part of the operating budget and can be used for anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I, I think I, um, I think I, I hit all of Mr. Salinas's questions that I, that I, Mr. Skels, you're going to get, holding me to task.
Why do we always look at staff when we talk about cutting?
Right. So, and, and, and thank you, Ms. Ray, and connected back to the idea, why do we have all these projects aren't done? You know, um, I can tell you that many independent people who who come to our facilities, who we don't pay them to say, and they're not obliged to say, talk about the condition, the outstanding condition that our facilities are in. Now, are there big ticket items that need to be done? That can't necessarily be funded out of the the annual budget for reasons we've seen in that first slide where there really isn't that much additional funding to spend on projects that are going to cost a million or $2 million or $3 million? And those are really the types of projects that we're talking about are large, big-ticket items. And the reason we tend to go to staff is for that exact reason. When you look at that first slide, what is it? 56% is salaries and how much is benefits?
We have 57% in salaries and then benefits, we're up to
15.62.
Yes.
So I mean, I think that's, that's really the reason for it is, is that, you know, there really isn't a lot of wiggle room. And, you know, we're given the the out of district tuitions. We're going to talk a little bit about the transportation question in a second. But a lot of those costs are not discretionary. They're they're kind of given to us and we're handed the percentage or the increase and we have to reconcile it. So that's unfortunate. Why we tend to go in the direction of staff. We cut everywhere we can, but there just isn't that much fat to cut in those other lines. So yeah, let me, I think there's a bit of a, perhaps a bit of a misunderstanding. We do indeed have an annual signed legal contract with Hunterdon. It's not some sort of a barter agreement. It really is a signed legal agreement. But but that has remained relatively constant for all these years. And I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how or why they've been able to do that. I will tell you that Hunterdon is not a vendor per se. They're actually a a board, right? They're actually a public board of education. Right? I don't know if, Mrs. Flores, if you, Ms. Flowers, you can shed any light on that? The nuances of that relationship? I can talk about to some extent why this one-time adjustment. But can you talk a little bit about Hunterdon ESC as an entity?
Yes, Hunterdon County ESC, they they have schools, they provide services to other schools. They have, so they do have a board themselves. And and they operate just like a school district in most cases. So in terms of them providing transportation to us, like you said, they have the ability to contract services with other districts because they have the resources that they're, they look to provide and and, you know, support other districts that way. But otherwise, the transportation agreement that we have, I can't really speak to the increase until we have the meeting with them. We do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, so I can really get a better understanding of what's happened over the years.
And to be honest with you, I'm not exactly, it's a good question, Ms. Ro. Not exactly sure how or why they've chosen to operate at a loss in terms of their arrangement with us. But that's in fact what's been happening for years is they have been actually not gen- not only have they ended up in generating revenue from us, they've been actually losing it. Now, is it fair for them to go for a one-time adjustment of 26%? Well, that's the conversation that we're going to have with them, you know, in good faith, if we can have that be a bit. Now, we did, we did ask that of them in our initial conversations. This was before our budget came into this clear focus as it is now. We did ask them if there was a way that we could kind of stagger that correction in over multiple years. The original response was no, but we're a little bit more motivated. You know, and a little bit more urgent at the bargaining table now. And in terms of why not a different vendor? Well, there aren't that many single vendors out there that have the the capacity to to handle a district like ours. Hunterdon, correct me if I'm wrong on this, actually rents like depot space. Because you're probably thinking, well, Hunterdon's not exactly around the corner. They do it in a six county. They actually have rented a depot here in, where is it? Do you know where the depot is, Hunterdon Depot? Is it actually in West Orange?
It's in West Orange.
Right.
It's in
Yeah, so so, you know, they, they, you know, they pay for space here and they rent space here. So there aren't that many. And if we were to go out to bid, we would probably have to chunk our existing contract into multiple vendors. We all know how complex transportation is, just managing one vendor and our own internal buses. Not great if we even got bids. And even if they were more competitive, which they might very well not be, because we are still, in spite of the 26% increase, getting a decent deal from Hunterdon as compared to what we might get from other vendors. So and and relative to the the energy savings, we did begin contracting this year with a company called Synergistic. It's a company that's based out of, out of Texas. And they work with public entities primarily, but also private on energy savings. And this is different from the ESIP, not the ESIP. This is basically a company that works gratis. I would, I would tell you, basically, I think the arrangement is that you, if you don't, if you don't make up the money, how does that, how does their, Ms. Flowers, do you recall exactly how that arrangement works?
I believe it's over five years and you're right. If they guarantee savings and if they don't, if we don't make that number, then there's like no cost to the district, but I would have to go back and
Exactly. Now, from what I understand, we've, we've realized, last I spoke with Rob Farrell, who's our internal liaison with Synergistic, we've realized several hundred thousand dollars of energy savings this year alone. Now, our efforts have been somewhat complicated with that because we've placed more of a critical eye on getting our buildings open and leaving dampers open, which isn't necessarily the best energy savings, although we are working on automating all of our systems. And that's part of the work we're going to do going into next year. But we are working with a vendor that could realize over five years, we could realize up to $2 to $2.5 million worth of savings to that. So we are, you know, and obviously not having the buildings occupied for long periods of time helped with that. As far as the presentations go, I apologize for that. And maybe, maybe it's a something we, a change we consider moving forward. Typically, the board presentations are presented, are posted to the website after the meeting or as it should be as a public attachment. So is it on the, I thought it was posted under public attachments, but, Mr. Skale?
It's posted, but I think what Ms. Mordecai was saying was, once it flipped over off back to the pictures for us to look at us, she could no longer see the slides.
So this is more of
It's a technical
It's a technical piece. Got you. Okay, very good. We'll, we'll get, we'll get that tightened up. As far as the, as far as the sped audit, I can't, I can't speak in specifics about that. But I can tell you that, you know, I have these conversations regularly with with Mrs. Gooby Fitzgerald and how we can realize efficiencies with not, without compromising our programming. And what I can tell you is, is that the needs continue to grow. You know, where one of the increases that's included in this, in this budgetary projection, you saw it in the slide, is because we need to add a BD program, I believe, at the middle school for our kids who are in the elementary BD program or aging up. And that's a good investment, not only because we keep our children here in our community, but also because that saves out of district costs. But, you know, we don't, you know, and I will circle back and see if there are some efficiencies there and whether we've looked at audit for efficiencies. But I can tell you that it seems like our needs, we, we seem to get the increasing number of students with, that have behavioral needs, that have specialized learning needs, whether it be autistic or otherwise, and our, and our, our expenses in special ed, you know, continue, continue to grow. We are continuing to look at the possibility of bringing in a program called Essential School Solutions. Is it Effective School Solutions or Central School Solutions? But it's basically an in-house therapeutic setting. But of course, that's also a balance too, because you have to understand that you have an adequate number of students that could be brought back into district for that program to balance out the cost of the program, which is about $300,000 per year. And it's hard to know that, you know, ahead of time. So it's a, it's a tough balance there. And finally, as far as in enrollment numbers, that's, that's definitely going to be one of the first places we look for, for, you know, saving staff lines. It was last year. In fact, last year, we were able to really minimize the impact on, on reducing staff members. We were able to really compress some sections, not replace some retirements and things of that nature. That's always the first place we look. And of course, obviously, we're always keeping a critical eye on class size and not wanting class size to become, you know, to the point where it's not a constructive learning environment, effective learning environment for children. And finally, relative to the two positions, I think it's important to realize that the assistant buildings and grounds director is not a new position. It's a, it's a revised title and job description. That position was previously the operations foreman. There is actually, there, I think, will actually represent breakage in that, in that position. But it is essentially the same staff line. And we did look at that as an efficiency. But ultimately, particularly because in this, in this pandemic, in this COVID environment and with so many physical plant projects coming up, we definitely did not think this was a time to hamstring our buildings and grounds department by cutting another kind of supervisory presence from that department. Final piece to that is, is we're looking at flexing that position so that that assistant director is able to spend some of that, the shift during the evening hours and be able to kind of circulate throughout the buildings and provide some quality control there at night. And the routing specialist was actually an administrative assistant position that we cut from the budget last year out of transportation. Not in complete transparency, when I said, when I, and we had a retirement, I said, you know what? You know, and my understanding was not complete at that time, that it was just simply a clerical type of position. And not to minimize the importance of clerical support in an office. But I didn't realize that that, that administrative assistant that that retired was also a router. She brought a specific technical expertise to that office on working with the director in routing. And so that's taken a really important piece of expertise out of that office that can assist in developing the routes and things of that nature. And so in conversation, consultation with the director of transportation, she really felt that that was a position that needed to be restored. And so it was a position that was originally cut from last year's budget that we had determined we needed to put back in for the overall operational effectiveness and efficiency of the transportation department. Did I miss anything?
I think you got them all, Dr. Cascon. I think there was a question or something in the chat. Ms. Mordecai said that the slides weren't posted, but they were. They were attached to the letter. I saw them earlier today. So that's still a technical question that we can circle back on to see how you can review the slides and speak simultaneously. Okay.
Kind of like me being in two places at the same time. I'm, I'm going to figure it out, Mr. Skale.
We'll clone you. Okay, so at this point, we're going to move into reports, discussions and recommendations. And we're going to begin with item A, personnel. Number one, appointments. And I'm just going to read because there are quite a few of them. So we're going to look at certificated staff appointments, non-certificated staff appointments, appointments approved, training level changes for W O E A certificated and non-certificated staff, which is attachment two. Additional teaching assignments. Co-curricular assignments, which is attachment three. Additional assignments and mentor assignments to be funded by the provisional teacher and substitute appointments. Do I have a motion to approve personnel number one, items A through H?
Yes.
Was that Mr. Rothstein?
Yes, and someone else. But I'm going to fight for the position to make the primary motion.
I'll second.
And that is Ms. Huerta?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we probably should say our names. I think it'll just be easier for Ms. Flowers to make sure she's getting everybody correct. Okay, so now we're going to move into item two, under personnel leaves of absence. A and B. We, are we, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We had a, we had a motion and a second. So Ms. Flowers, would you do the honors?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Whelton?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Skills?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we're going to move into item two, leaves of absence. A and B. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. Is there a second?
Yes, this is Mr. Rothstein, and I second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Flowers, would you do the honors?
Ms. Huerta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Skills?
Yes. And thank you. And item three, which is the job description for the routing specialist. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion, Mrs. Melinda Huerta here.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Miss, any discussion? Ms. Flowers, please.
Mrs. Beto?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Skills?
Yes. Thank you. And under B, curriculum and instruction. Attachment five, applications for school business requests. Attachment six, student teaching for the 2021 school year. And number three, approval of the academic literacy and remote learning for second language parents program at Washington School. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Jennifer Tuddy Cliff?
Thank you. Give us your first name.
Melinda here, second.
Thank you. And any discussion on these items?
I just wanted to say, I'm really happy to see that we're doing the academic literacy and remote learning. I really think that our parents can really benefit from this. This is definitely a great program. And I, I wanted to mention it before, but I decided to wait for now. But Mrs. Amelia Morales is going to be the one that is in this position to be the instructor. And she already has such great ties to the community. She's very involved. So I think that it brings an extra level of comfort for the parents. And of, you know, they don't feel, they feel comfortable to come and ask her questions and be very involved and engaged in the class. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, on exactly the same matter. Thank you so much for saying that, Melinda, because when I read up on this, it also warmed my heart. And I thought this is a smart thing to do and a good investment, even at a relatively low cost. But for the benefit of the public, I was hoping that we could get a very brief explanation of what the program is.
Sure, Mr. Rothstein. So so it's really part of a, more of a kind of a cohesive strategy this year. You know, you know, that's part of the ESL bilingual parent advisory council, part of which is all for the parent liaison who we've, we partnered with through Rutgers University. And so it's really just another, another form of outreach whereby we're working with parents to help them understand, you know, navigating the platform, you know, understanding assessment, understanding the report card, how they can, they can support learning at home with their children. And also gather feedback, right? What, what challenges are the parents facing? How can you better support them? So it's really all of these things.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great. Any further discussion? Right, Mrs. Flowers?
Yes. Mrs. Merkinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Skills?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, under finance, C, special services. Items one and two. Item one is extraordinary aid services adjustments. Item two is service providers for related services. May I have a motion? Someone, there's a little noise in the background. I'm not sure what that is. It sounds like
That's the issues that we were having with Ms. Flores.
That's the issues that we were having with Ms. Flores. She's using her phone, so if, and if you can, if you can mute your phone, that could actually help us a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza and Ms. Flores. Okay.
This is Gary. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
And this is Jennifer. I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Um, I would just like to note if somebody could maybe, just for the edification of our public, to talk a little bit about the Kid Clan Services, Speech Therapy that's going to be happening at Kelly.
Sure. So thank, thank you for that question, Ms. Tunnycliff. So this is in, basically in lieu of, this is to, to provide services to meet the needs of a caseload of a, of an, I'm sorry, of a speech therapist who's going out on maternity leave. And not only due to the difficulty of finding that, but also for fiscal efficiency. We're contracting out with, with Kid Clan, who we use pretty regularly, as opposed to hiring a full-time staff member to do that. It actually will be cheaper, in fact, to, to do it through a third-party vendor who we use. But equal, equal quality. Equal quality, that's what Ms. Gogody tells me. So I think it's important to note that, that, you know, we're not simply looking to pinch pennies here. It's both fiscally responsible and also ensures we have a high quality of service for our children.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alrighty, Mrs. Flowers?
Mrs. Whelton?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Triggs Gills?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Flowers. And now we're going to move on to the Business Office, and there are nine items there. I'm just going to go through them quickly. We have the Bills List. We have Attachment Seven, which is Transfers Within the Budget. We have the Secretary's Report, which is Attachment Eight. We have the Report of the Treasurer of School Monies, which is Attachment Nine. We have Non-Public Security Aid Program Expenditures. We have Six. We are avoiding the following stale dated checks. We have number seven, a donation, and thank you to Blackboard Giving Fund, $100 to West Orange High School. And number eight, we have an agreement between the Titan School Solutions and the West Orange Board of Ed for Online Meal Account System. And number nine, we have a, an approval for a settlement agreement. May I have a motion to move those nine items?
Yes, this is Gary. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Was that Ms. Merklinger?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, any discussion?
Yeah, just Item Number Eight, if we could get a brief explanation of, of that program with Titan School Solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. And Ms. Flowers would defer to you on that one.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the Titan School Solutions is a vendor that our Food Service Department is presently working on a trial. We're looking to change the point-of-sale system that we're presently using. So right now, they've launched it for purposes of training only, at no cost. It's going to be live next week so that the department can start receiving training and the system and software can get up to speed and ready to go by the time our students return back. And we start to get to the point where we're starting to receive revenue for the meals from families. But the contract is not actually going to be presented for approval, and a payment wouldn't be due until the contract went into place as of July.
And just a follow-up, if, if I can be permitted. If, if a family carries a current balance with the current vendor, will that just carry over seamlessly to the new one?
Yes, yes, they're working on how to integrate the two so that the funds would roll over and the system would be, the old platform would be discontinued and the new platform would begin. But all funds and things would roll over so that we would have the correct amounts on any balance in any accounts.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a follow-up question on this as well? Um, what was the cost per transaction with the old point-of-sale system?
I believe it was a percentage, but I will make a note to, I believe it was a percentage of the transaction, and I, I should know this. As much money as I was voting for my own kids' accounts, but I can't recall right now. I will double back and make sure to confirm and circle back to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other discussion on Items One through Nine? Alrighty, Mrs. Flowers, we're ready for a vote.
Okay, Mrs. Beto?
Yes, on all except nine.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes, with the exception of nine.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes, also with the exception of Item Number Nine.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
And, yes, with the exception of nine.
And, but President Triggs Gills?
Yes, all with the exception of Number Nine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And now D, Miscellaneous. We have three items there. We have our district calendar for the 2021-22 school year, which is Attachment Number Ten. Attachment Number Eleven is the 21-22 calendar for the Departments of Buildings and Grounds and Transportation. And Number Three, Attachment Twelve, is the 21-22 calendar for the Central Office Administrative Personnel. May I have a motion to approve those three items?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, this is Gary. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on these three items?
I just have a quick question on the district calendar, and Dr. Sam, I know this has come up before, but just for our community, for folks that are wondering why we're not starting earlier, so maybe, and I know in West Orange, we've never done this before. We've never started in August, but the consideration for starting so late, much later in September, so September ninth. If you, could we just get a little bit of thoughts as to why we're, why we're doing that?
Sure. You know, when I, when I was beginning to construct this calendar preliminarily, you know, my thought was, is, you know, could we, could we have the, the two staff days happen in August and then, you know, and then have our, you know, start the school year a little bit earlier. And it really varies from district to district. In some districts, the past practice is that staff members, you know, do come in before September first for staff development or, or, you know, orientation days. And, like, for example, Livingston, when I looked at their school calendar, there, there is past practice in there, and Glen Ridge, for that matter. There were two that I looked at. In West Orange, it's never been the case. So our, our staff has never reported before September one, and, you know, I, I don't believe that the contractor were able to oblige them to do so. Which is why we're starting, we're having the two staff days, you know, on Wednesday and Thursday. And then, you know, we have the Jewish holidays, Rosh Hashanah the, the next week, which gives us that late start. There's a silver lining to the cloud, though, which is my, my, my sense is that having a little bit more runway, you know, in advance of the school year, won't necessarily be a bad thing. And as you also see, it doesn't really impact greatly the end of the school year. We end approximately on the same date. The only thing it really disabled us from being able to do, Mrs. Merklinger, was building any kind of, you know, any kind of whipped cream and cherries in, in, you know, in the calendar in terms of little extra days here and there. It's pretty, it's pretty, pretty bare bones otherwise, as far as that goes. But it doesn't really impact the end of the school year. But that's essentially, in my typical long-winded fashion, Mrs. Merklinger, the answer to the question.
Thank you, and I'm sure that was helpful for folks that were just curious about that, the timeframe. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And also, I, I might just add, we don't know what September brings. So I think any additional time that we have getting ready will be to our benefit at this point. Alrighty, any other discussion?
All right. I actually had something. I know I sent an email out rather close to tonight's meeting, so I'm not sure if Dr. C or anybody else got to receive it, but just wanted to acknowledge that Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha do fall within this school year, so May third, which is a Tuesday, and then Friday, June 10th. And so I just think that, you know, maybe we can make a recommendation or, you know, to recognize or potentially be recognized for school day off. Obviously not for the coming year, because, you know, we're already pretty set on that, but just, you know, for possible future calendar years.
Would you tell us what those are, please?
I'm sorry, sorry, yes, for that. So Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha are two, the only two holidays in the Islamic calendar, or for the Islamic year, and they move up every, every year. So similar to like the Jewish holidays, and so just to recognize that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Flowers, would you do the honors?
Yes, please. Mrs. Beto?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Triggs Gills?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to move into petitions and hearings of citizens, and these are any questions that you may have, questions or comments for the board. Ms. Gravteza?
Thank you. Yes, so this is, as Mr. Triggs Gills said, tongue twister, petition and hearings from citizens about anything that you would like to speak of. And we see, first, I have Felice Flit. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hi, this is Felice Flit, 55 Bowlin Drive. Just first, on the agenda under the miscellaneous items, Attachments 11 and 12, the dates are wrong. So you guys may want to just take a look at it. It does not correspond to the district calendar as far as the, the dates that are in there. Um, as far as, I can tell you specifically, the New Jersey, where was it? Sorry. Going back to the calendar, New Jersey Convention Date was incorrect. Maybe that wasn't the one that was wrong. Good Friday was wrong, for sure, on both of them. And something else, and I don't remember what the other thing was, but it was definitely Good Friday was wrong on both of them. Also, I have a high school student that's supposed to start next week, and the virtual calendar on the high school page on the West Orange Board of Ed has not been updated yet for March. I don't know who to reach out to. My son is going to be a freshman, so this is all very new for me. Also, what door do the kids go to? Is there someone who's going to be available for freshmen and other new students to show them where to go, as this is their first time in the building? It's a little bit intimidating. It's a really, really, really big building. So I don't think he's nervous, but I'm nervous. So, and I'm dropping him off, so I don't even know where to drop him off. We've gotten no communication whatsoever from his guidance counselor. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next. Felice, I'm sorry, don't unmute yourself. That was, you, you muted yourself. You got me before I got to you. Next, I have, it's just a series of numbers, so, but it's not a phoned, I don't believe. So you'll, you'll see the, the prompt on your screen, and it's, the last numbers are 0269, if you can give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, it's Ron Charles, 25 Colonial Wood Drive.
I'm sorry, hi, Ron.
Hello, how are you? I don't know why it came up like that, but it did. So, anyway, so I just wanted to set the record straight or clarify the record on the item that Mr. Felina's brought up and Ms. Flowers explained about the $3 million in additional CD. So the board at the time did a lot of lobbying and meetings with Senator Sweeney, Senator Ruiz, Assemblyman J.C. and McKean, and we were able to secure an extra $3 million right around the end of the budget season, or maybe shortly thereafter. So the board didn't give back $3 million to the taxpayers. We split the money about 70, 30%. We gave back about, about 30% of that. We kept the other money in the budget to save some of the layoffs. We used some for capital projects. A lot of it went to the bubble, because the bubble, as may, may, some of you may know, started out as an increase or cost of about $465,000 and ended up in a neighborhood of somewhere around $1.4 million. So we, we, we used the money from the state aid that year to, like I said, save, save some layoffs, put the money in a capital project. Then we did return a small portion of the money, which I think turned to, back to the citizens. I want to say somewhere like around $92, $91. That, that, that's what, that's what it was, right? But, you know, the board voted on it. It was an honest, an honest vote. So I just wanted to make, clarify that, what, we didn't give back the whole $3 million to the citizens, the taxpayers. We felt that saving some staff from being laid off, using it for some capital projects, and then giving some taxpayer relief was, at the time, the responsible thing to do. And that will conclude my comment.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Tez Roro. Tez, if you can follow the prompt once again on your screen.
Good evening again, 24 Hunn. The new vendor for the food system, for lack of better terms. I think I saw 260 per transaction. Is that like at a reload time or? Yes, okay. Kindergarten, right? I think most parents by now know that registration has started, and some of us have already made our appointments. I know we don't even know what tomorrow holds in terms of snow or, you know, COVID, but just curious, based on what we learned so far from remote or, you know, hybrid learning. I just registered my four-and-a-half-year-old. He's expected to start kindergarten in Gregory, and it's a bittersweet moment. I don't know what to expect. So best case, you know, we're in school. Worst case, it's virtual or hybrid. So what can we expect, right? How can we best prepare? Are we making any changes to, to help parents and kids? And then I'll just mention that there is a group of us working on potentially bringing pre-K to West Orange. And there has been one interest meeting early February, and there's another one on the 24th at 7:00 P.M. This is headed by the West Orange Council of PTA. So if you go to W O C P T A dash Public Page, you'll find the details there. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, Jeremiah Salinas, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Jeremiah Salinas, seven, Crystal Ave. A couple of things. I'm a little concerned or surprised, I would say, that Mr. Ken Alper was appointed as special council. I really don't understand the term. For what, what, whatever reason that was. I, I would like some clarification on, on, on what that position, volunteer position is. Because from experience and from listening to him at the, at the recent, or the recent Board of Ed elections, he was a person that was adamant about not adding any more Board of Ed members. But now he's as a special counsel to the board, which doesn't make sense at all to me. In addition to that, comments made regarding the amount of time that residents have to voice their opinions. I think, you know, they're not, they're detrimental to what we're trying to do here, right? What the district is trying to do here, trying to hear everybody out. Trying to understand what the community needs, especially during this time. Lowering the amount of time that parents have, that taxpayers have, whether they have children in the schools or not. It's not conducive to a, a, a productive meeting. We're all in this. It's not just my school district because my children go to the school district. This is my school district because I live in this town. And my school district is tied up to what, what, what happens here in my house financially, based on what I have to pay in taxes. So, yes. Whether I have kids in a school district or I don't have kids in a school district, I need to have a voice, and my voice needs to be heard. Whether that is for 30 seconds, whether that is for two minutes, whether that is for three minutes. And to float the idea of lowering the amount of time that any one of our residents has, it's, it's counterproductive, right? I am glad, extremely excited that most of these Zoom calls have had 500 people tuned in. That's something that we have been discussing for, for, for many years now, the amount of people that we want to, to, to have participation at these Board of Ed meetings, because we want the public to know what's happening with our schools. We want the public to know that, that our schools, how are they functioning? And one final thing. When will preparations begin to be made for the opening hybrid or, or, or whatever model we'll have in September? Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Sandra Mordecai. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, thank you. Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. I ran out of time on my comments before, but I just wanted to add. Uh, also, when you're still looking at the budget, I, I know at the moment, the preschool is located on Northfield Avenue, and that you're renting from the church. I don't know what the enrollment numbers look like, but if it's possible to put a preschool classroom in each of the seven elementaries, and then the elementaries would all be preschool through grade four, and then the fifth grade could move into the central six, so it would be a central, it would be a grade five and six school, and then all your elementaries would be preschool through grade four, then you would also save on the rental of that property from the church. So I, I'm not sure if you've also discussed that lease as well, but that's another thing. One more thing, I, I'm just surprised that over the years, many board members, myself, Mr. Charles, and few others advocated for a zero-based budgeting system. I don't see this as a zero-based budget that, you know, that you did it this way, and it's not in the goal, the budget goals either. So that's it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Vicky Jenkins, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, this is actually Vicky's husband. This is Jay Jenkins, 1083 Pleasant Valley Way. Uh, I just have a quick question on if Edison is doing the, I don't know if they're doing the parent walkthrough or what they're doing for the spring for any of their children that are coming, graduating from fifth grade that are going into Edison. So I wanted to get information on that, how that's going to happen this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jenkins. And do we have anyone else at this time who would like to speak? It is the raise your hand function, excuse me, raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen. And for our call-in attendees, it is star, star nine. And seeing none, we're all finished with that portion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza. Okay, Dr. Cascone?
Sure.
Would you like to begin here?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start, and I may, I may throw, throw a ball back to you as well. That's all right, at the, at the end. Right, so as far as the, you know, Ms. Split, I'll, I'll have to circle back with Mr. Moore and the high school administrative team. My understanding would have been that, I know that they created a, a, like a tutorial video that kind of gave students and parents perspective on exactly what, you know, what the, the entry and the day would look like. My understanding was that a parental communication has gone out of. That is not the case. I will follow Mr. Moore tomorrow and, and find out when parents can expect that that will go out. I would have thought that would have gone out by now. Um, I, I could be wrong, but I'm looking at Good Friday 2022, which is what we're talking about. And it is, in fact, Friday, April 15th, which is, I believe, how it's reflected on the calendar. So, I'm not sure. Uh, you were looking at the, at 2021, but April 15th, 2022 is, is Good Friday. Just because it's kind of on the same note I have here, I will follow with Mr. Fitzgerald at Edison School. Um, I, you know, I know that last year, even amidst, you know, a much worse situation, they were able to do some form of a parent orientation. I would imagine they would probably do that again for students. But I will follow up with him and understand when that communication is going to go out to fifth grade parents. Just speaking to Ms. Roro's comments, and these are also kind of connected to Mr. Salinas's comments as well, in terms of when we're going to begin to prepare for next year. I think right now our focus is squarely on the budget. Um, and, and I think once, once the dust is settled on the budget and we know exactly what our staff looks like, we'll be able to kind of engage in that, that conversation a little bit more concretely. I think what's, what's making it a largely theoretical conversation at this point is, one, we, we don't, we don't have current information on, on, you know, what parents would keep their kids home and what parents would send their kids in. And I think even if we were to survey parents right now, there are many parents don't even know whether they want to send their kid, we're not sure whether they want to send their kids back this year, let alone next year. And that's going to continue to be a challenge in planning for that. So it remains sort of a theoretical exercise right now. I think the other thing that makes it largely a theoretical exercise is we have no, we have no guidance from the state as to what might be the guidelines for opening in September. And of course, you know, we're, you know, five or six months out until September and have really no idea in terms of what the pandemic might look like. But I can tell you that even in the absence of all those very relevant pieces of information, the, 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 the concept is more time onsite for students who want it, and that they are being serviced by a dedicated teacher that's not trying to serve both hybrid students and virtual students. And I do believe with, even with a couple of months' advanced planning time, that is something that we will be able to work out. But I would, you know, I'd be disingenuous to say that that planning has begun in earnest at this point in time. Our primary focus right now is going to getting through this, this budget cycle. Um, as far as what, what parents, supports, parents can expect, and I'm not sure it's exactly where Ms. Roro was going, and this is where I was going on this one. Certainly, as we did last year for incoming kindergartners and kindergarten parents, we'll have both, both parent and, and student orientations. My thought on it is, is that whereas last year, our kids weren't in school at all, so the possibility of doing an onsite orientation for students the year before they come in was not really a feasibility. But my thought is that that would be very feasible, very possible. And so I do believe that the kindergarten orientation would occur onsite this year. As opposed to at the beginning of the year, like we did it this year. But along the lines of social emotional supports, I had a preliminary meeting with, with Ms. Cheryl Butler, our Director of School Counseling. And we had kind of a high-level conversation about, you know, what are going to be the social emotional needs of both staff and students coming in next year, coming back into the building? We know that there's going to be a lot of, for lack of a better word, social emotional baggage that students and staff members might be bringing into, into school. And so how does school, the opening of school look different next year from, from previous years? In other words, not just simply being business as usual, but how is it different? Um, what kind of opportunities are we building in the beginning of the year to really re-onboard students to that experience? And what kinds of periodic checks and balances and, and supports are we putting in place? So that's a conversation that is, has just started. I asked Ms. Butler to go back to the team of school counselors and to create kind of a policy brief for me of kind of key, key points, key premises that we're going to want to take into consideration, and then we can start putting together teams to kind of build out plans for support structures and, and procedures for next year. Right, so the, the preschool is, is a, is a tough nut to crack. And I, and I think, and there's, there's a lot here, and you know, some of it was Ms. Mrs. Roro's comments and so were Ms. Mordecai's. So let me, let me, let me hit first the preschool expansion grant. So we, we got information on the preschool expansion grant a bit late this year. I believe that we, we first became aware of the preschool expansion grant from the state in late October. We intended a, attended a technical assistance workshop in late October. Uh, and the deadline for submitting the grant was 18 business days after the technical assistance workshop. We did, I did convene a meeting with our grant writer, our grant writing firm, and just kind of asked about the feasibility. And while there's some difference of opinion of whether 18 business days was adequate, ultimately, we did not feel that we had the runway to get that done, and partially because it's not simply a matter of filling in boxes on a form. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of partnership and liaison that has to happen in order to make that work, whether it's partnering with local providers or exploring potential lease spaces or whatever the case may be. That being said, we're absolutely committed to applying for that next year, and I look forward to working with the Council of PTAs because they've done a great job of outreach to other interested parties and people who bring good expertise and knowledge to bear as to how we can successfully apply for this grant. So I'm looking forward to partnering up with that group and the proactive research that they're doing and making it a true kind of community and school partnership to make sure that we get that grant in and awarded to the district going into next year. Now, that is a slightly different conversation from, you know, our current preschool. We do currently lease the space from the, the Bia, the Betty Madeleine Early Learning Center from Life Christian Church on Northfield Ave. Um, that is principally a preschool disabled program. And so for the same, same points that Mrs. Mordecai was making before about, about, you know, how, how we, we kind of consolidated special ed services at Kelly School, I think the same premise sort of applies for this. It's a very specialized program. And in, in order to now create in seven different buildings the support staff and the resources that will be necessary to support, you know, seven different specialized disabled classes, I would argue would be a logistic challenge. The other thing is that when we talk about universal preschool and now offering preschool, not just simply to our preschool disabled students, but expanding that, there is a budgetary consideration that's associated with that. Now, if we successfully apply for the grant, could we defer some of those staff costs through that? Most likely we could, but we also would need to be careful that if that grant ever dried up, then we would be obliged to fund that program through local resources. But suffice to say, if this district wanted to move in the direction of universal preschool, then that's going to be absolutely a case of stealing Peter to pay Paul. Paul being a universal preschool program. Peter, we're not exactly sure who that would be or what it would be, but suffice to say, we, particularly in light of the budget challenges that we described tonight, we would not be able to do that without cutting significant programming elsewhere. And maybe it's worth it, because there's really nothing more important than early intervention programs and preschool programs, kindergarten studies programs, but that's what that would entail. But we are looking at spaces. Um, we have a couple of possibilities, you know, which I'm not really prepared to discuss publicly now, but I'm in conversation with the township relative to potentially utilizing some space in the 10 Rooney property in the event that that ultimately gets cleared, um, and being able to swap some spaces out. Uh, but we are optimistic that by the 22, 23 school year, uh, we will, we will have a, a new location that will be larger and that will be able to accommodate not only an expanding preschool disabled program, but also be able to add some, some additional classes, some transition classes, um, in particular for students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. Now, as far as the zero-based budget goes, so last year, we did a zero-based budget. And what ended up happening was, we ended up with $3.5 million of additional requisitions from the administrative team. And, you know, $3.5 million of requisitions that we ultimately couldn't fund. And so, you know, to, to me, it's, it's counterproductive when we know, we know darn well that we're going to end up having, that, that not only can we not fund, that, that not even, not only can we not fund more expenditures out of those existing discretionary lines, but we actually have, we, we have to cut those discretionary lines that it made more sense from a practical standpoint to, and basically what's happening now is, you say like, all those lines were cut 20%. But what it is, is, is that that pot of money has been cut by 20%. Now, we're engaging informally in what's really a zero-based budget, meaning that every department supervisor, let's talk about Mrs. Domenas areas in the area curriculum. Every department supervisor is bringing forward to Mrs. Domenas a budget. Mrs. Domenas then holds those budgets side by side. And so will every department get a 20% cut? No. Some departments might get a 40% increase, and other departments might get a 25% cut, depending upon the competing priorities. For example, we have a overdue social studies implementation on the elementary level. We have to do it. Um, that ultimately will create an increase for the social studies department that's based upon a programmatic need connected to the strategic, the strategic plan. There are other departments where there may not be as large a critical need for expenditures next year, and so they might get a decrease. So i- in essence, it is to some extent a zero-based budget, but we've started with a cut pot of money, because that's what's necessary to balance the budget. So that's, that's just a little bit of insight into how we're trying to balance it. And that's, I believe, Mr. Triggs Gales, that's all I have. I thought you might want to take the, the question from Mr. Salinas about Mr. Alper.
Yes, I'll, I'll actually address both of Mr. Salinas's questions. As far as Mr. Alper is concerned, that title is consultant. And that, the reason that I asked him, and I have said this at two other public board meetings, is because I am in my second year on the negotiation, negotiations committee, and Ms. Tony Cliff is in her first year. And we felt that with negotiating three contracts this year, we needed a bit more experience. And so I asked Mr. Alper if he would be interested in assisting Ms. Tony Cliff and myself in that regard, and he agreed. It is the Board of Education's prerogative to invite whomever they wish to sit on their negotiating committee. This has been cleared through our Board Council as well as New Jersey School Board Association Council. Your second comment, Mr. Salinas, about the board lowering comment time, we've never had that conversation. I do know from watching the town council meeting that that was a topic. But this board never had a conversation about decreasing the three minutes that we have always allocated to individuals during public comment. So we agree with you. We, we want our public to speak. We want to hear from them. We represent them. So like I said, we totally agree with you that that's extremely important. All right, any comments from the board? Any, anyone want to address any of those questions? If not, we will, I'm sorry, Ms. Tony Cliff.
If I could just also, on the issue of asking Mr. Alper to join us on the negotiations, he had also started with you. So for continuity as well, you had, as I recall, you had wanted, thought that would be important to have his voice on there to lend some historical perspective to what had already gone on in those negotiations prior to my joining.
Yes, thank you for adding that. All right.
Add as well.
Okay, who's, who's speaking?
Hi, Gary.
Mr. Rush?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, just very briefly, I wanted to remind you about the Good Friday question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Mr. Rothstein clarified for us, Dr. Cascone, that it is attachment 11 and 12 that has Good Friday on April 22nd, as opposed to the school calendar, which is correct on April 15th.
And I didn't search for.
Is that correct?
That, that's correct. Now, that is correct. So I apologize for that corrected for staff.
Okay, so we will get that corrected.
Yes.
And thank you so much. All right.
Oh. Terry, just wanted to.
Terry, just wanted to clarify, and just around Ken's consultation, it's for a specific amount of time as well. Part of our, one of our, the board agenda, we did actually put in the specific amount of time that he will be in that role. So just wanted that clarification that this isn't an open-ended, Ken's part of the Board of Ed, it's in a specific role with a specific directive for a specific amount of time.
And he, and thank you, and he does not meet with the Board of Ed, that, that does not happen, yes. Okay, so this will take us right into, is someone else speaking?
Yes, I actually wanted to mention something, I, I know Gary, I like Gary go before myself, but um. So I did want to also mention, it's not a paid position. I don't know if that was mentioned, but I mean, I know it was mentioned before, it's not a paid position. But then I also did want to remind or just bring up again that this is something that has come up in conversation amongst. The community about adding board members and expanding the board, and this is something that's definitely. We all know that the board is a lot of work, and I think that that is something that we should also keep into consideration going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. It is a lot of work, there's no doubt about that. And it has, that's a great lead-in because that's exactly what I was going to say. That our committees are up and running and we are moving right along. We are clarifying how we do business and when we have our next policy meeting. We have a couple of documents that we'll be taking a look at. One is our code of ethics for virtual meetings, we have a code of ethics that. We all abide by normally, but the New Jersey School Board suggested that we. Have an additional one just for virtual meetings, and the other one is a best practices. Governance best practices, and that's going to give us some guidance in how we run our committee meetings. And so at this juncture, we're going to have reports from the board members, so we'll start with Ms. Huerta.
Thank you, Mrs. Terry Trick scales, thank you to the board. I did want to, I guess, have another just quick moment for Mr. K. He was my gym teacher at Edison, I think that's where he started off. But I do remember him and, you know, there's just no words that I can say, you know, losing teachers throughout this whole time. It's just never easy for anybody, so my condolences to the family and. My regards to the, you know, the community, the school community that had the privilege of interacting with him. I did want to mention that Cope Center Community Programs are running free parenting workshops, this is a center. There was an email sent out, I believe by, what is it, the. Mrs. Butler, I believe, sent it out to the community, and it's Cope Center Inc. in Bloomfield. I'm sorry, Montclair, they have a workshop, it's a free parenting workshop to help you learn to listen or to. Start to listen to your children more and just learn to just kind of be a lending ear and not necessarily react. But just to learn to understand the family, you know, your family members and your children a bit more, so their next. Meeting will be virtually on Thursday, February twenty-fifth. And you can find the information at spendj.org, S-P-E-N-J dot org. WOCPAC is having a clothing drive, March twenty-seventh, at the West Orange Public Library. And so, you know, I know that our community is very engaged and very involved with, you know, all of these great fundraisers and. If you're anything like me, trying to declutter the house and get your stuff out of here, and so. Go give it to the WOCPAC for a good cause. Liberty Middle School PTA is actually also doing a fundraiser, Board and Brush in March. And those are just fun things, I think that the community definitely would like to be engaged and involved in. We do have a lottery open for pre-K as well that ends this month, Dr. Cascon, I don't know if you can give us a bit more information on that. But I, I've seen the notifications going out. Unfortunately, my little one won't be four by the time, so she always, she's going to miss the cutoff, so I can't register her for this year, but, you know. Hopefully this program goes well and we can, you know, start to offer some pre-K. And in ending of the Black History Month this month, I just wanted to, you know, thank all of the activism that's been going on, all of the community engagement that's been going on. I know Mr. Rothstein did suggest, you know, for everybody to educate themselves and take the time to just listen and, and, you know, I'm very appreciative of that. And, you know, it's not just one month, right? We have to continuously do this kind of work to, you know, acknowledge and to learn and to. Address the concerns of all of the community and to recognize that Black History Month happens actually all over the world and many different. Holidays and countries do acknowledge it and have their own separate days, especially in the Latino community. Latin America, we have a lot of rich history and. So I just encourage you to find out what those dates are for Black History Month in other countries, Venezuelan, Black History Month, Ecuadorian Black History Month. And so Panama, Black History Month, and so, yeah, that's, that's all I have, I think. Thank you very much for all those that attended and for the feedback, that's definitely what we're here for.
Thank goodness, Huerta, very, very nice, very nice, okay, Ms. Merklinger.
Sure, so I just want to echo, you know, our condolences for. The family of Mr. K and the Gregory community, definitely upsetting news, but we are West Orange and we always pull together, so. Definitely our condolences, thoughts with the family. Dr. C kind of stole my thunder a little bit earlier with his inspirational videos, is this Thursday at seven o'clock. I did want to recognize that our, the spring production is happening, so auditions are apparently coming up, so for everyone at West Orange High School, be aware of that. I want to congratulate Kylie Capshaw, who hit her thousandth career point in basketball, that's an amazing feat, so congratulations on that. And I also just wanted to let the community know that. Some parents in our community did start up the Adopt a Senior Class of 2021, it's a Facebook group. You can adopt seniors, they're posting their Amazon gift lists, their Venmo accounts. So if you are interested in adopting one of our fabulous seniors. You can check that out, what I think is amazing is just the schools that our students are getting into and accepted at. The list is just, if you go into some of the bios that they posted about themselves, so each student has mentioned. Some of their accomplishments throughout the course of their, their years at West Orange High School and for those who attended. From kindergarten up through high school, their experiences and the clubs and groups that they've been involved with. And the folks that are not just even colleges, those that are going on to join the military, those who are going to vote tech. Going into some more hands-on careers, it's just amazing, so congratulations to all of our seniors. As they are moving forward. And I definitely encourage our community to join into that, the Adopt a Senior Class of 2021. And for the class of 2021, the scholarship application is open through the West Orange Scholarship Fund. And that's open through April fifth. And that's it for now.
Great, thank you, Ms. Merklinger. All right, Vice President Tony Cliff.
Thank you, President Triggs Gales. Well, it's been a busy, busy legislative week in Trenton. And I wanted to start off by saying, before I get into my legislative report, is that. We all as a board wrote a letter to Governor Murphy this week. Advocating to prioritize teacher vaccinations, we feel this is important, there's been a lot of. Talk about it, but we felt that a strong message from our board, as other boards are doing. To advocate to prioritize our teachers at all of the state, county, and private vaccination centers. We think this is the best way to be able to open our schools fully. And give our teachers a peace of mind that they deserve after working so hard this year, so. I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that, that works and. From the governor's office on Friday, there was a DOE announcement. Governor Murphy and the New Jersey Department of Education Acting Commissioner, Dr. Angelica Allen McMillan. Announced a new plan called the Road Forward. And what this is, is a series of coordinated policy initiatives that'll expand the administration's efforts to identify and address. Both academic and mental health impacts of COVID nineteen on New Jersey students and educators. As part of this coordinated initiative, there. It's going to be one point two billion dollars in federal COVID relief funds that'll be available to districts. That'll include grants that are dedicated specifically to research-based instructional and mental health interventions. They also announced that they're going to be seeking public comment and will submit a request to the U.S. Department of Education to waive the federal requirements to administer statewide assessments this spring. So that was really exciting to hear that. On March fifteenth, the Department of Ed is going to be releasing the applications for the one point two billion in federal SRF two funds. Which is the Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act from two thousand twenty-one. So that deadline to submit those will be May fourteenth. And let's see. So there's going to be two additional grant opportunities that'll provide a hundred and five million dollars. To support districts in providing additional academic and mental health supports. Seventy-five percent of a district's allocation will be used to support. The research-based academic enrichment activities such as one-on-one tutoring, summer learning academies, things like that. And then twenty-five percent will be used for strategies to support the broader learning ecosystem. There's also a thirty million dollar mental health grant. And those funds will be able to assist districts in implementing sustainable school-based mental health supports for all students and educators. That'll help provide a more comprehensive model for us. I mentioned about the waiver, which is super exciting and. They're also, as part of this announcement, they also talked about a Start Strong Initiative. That is going to be the formative assessment, that'll be done in September. So that is about that, so, so far, oh, and the final announcement I have today is. You may have heard that Governor Murphy signed an adult-use cannabis reform bill into law. That'll legalize and regulate the use and possession for adults twenty-one years and older. So the impacts on, and there also was another bill signed, S-3454. That clarifies marijuana and cannabis use and possession penalties for individuals that are younger than twenty-one years old. So how does this impact our school district, well, we have to look at on the administrative side, our curriculum. And then for us as board members, we'll need to reevaluate our substance abuse policies, so you'll be looking for. Some of those later in the year, and that's all for me, thank you, Ms. Trick scales.
Thank you, it has been extremely busy in Trenton. And tomorrow, we, we hope to get some good news out of Trenton, out of Governor Murphy's office. Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you very much. Ms. Huerta, thank you so much, I, I, I love when I learn new ways that I'm ignorant. I had no idea that Black History Month was celebrated outside of the United States, I thought that was, you know, our special celebration, so thank you, I now have more learning to add to my list. And so I want to start off by just making a quick mention about the Policy Committee. We had a terrific meeting several weeks ago, a public meeting, a policy workshop. Mrs. Merklinger and Dr. Cascon and I will be meeting tomorrow to plan our next policy workshop. And we're going to be working very hard to complete our policy updates, you know, before the end of June this year, so excited to get that done. And thank you, Ms. Tuna Cliff, for mentioning more revisions on policies that we've already approved, it's a never-ending cycle, but, but it's good stuff. Just in terms of a few programs upcoming. Wednesday night, I'll be attending a program called Let's Talk About It, about underage drinking, I got the invitation from Principal Hush at Roosevelt Middle School. I believe this invitation was for Roosevelt and Liberty parents, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. So if it's, you know, anyone who's listening, if you're not aware of it, check in with the principal of your school and see if that's a program that you can still be a part of, I'm looking forward to it. Later that evening, I'm taking a course with New Jersey School Board Association called Leading Through Chaos. I feel like after this experience, I could teach that course instead of taking it, but I'm looking forward to, to participating and learning. What they have to offer us, these are a number of courses that the School Board Association offers to help strengthen the knowledge and the skill sets of your members of the Board of Ed. So just wanted everyone to be aware that that is something that we all do on an ongoing basis, is continue our education. So that we can better serve and serve with a greater base of knowledge. To that end, I know Ms. Tuna Cliff and I will be attending the School Board Association's Governance Two Program, coming up. March ninth, and that has to do with, with finance. And so perfect timing as we work our way through the budget to be immersing ourselves in education about school finance programs as well. Finally, I want to close out with congratulations to the West Orange High School Drama Group for their production of Lovesick. Which was just really amazing on so many levels, I, I, it's always difficult, it's difficult to put on a play. At all, but I know in this case, it was a play that the, that the drama group had planned to do on stage. That didn't work out because of COVID. I, I, I can't even imagine what it took to convert this over into a Zoom-style presentation. But the result was, any of you who saw this, I would imagine will agree with me, it was funny, it was quirky, it was occasionally risque. I had to try to talk around a few issues that my daughter asked questions about. It was thought-provoking and there were a couple of really sincere gut punches in it. Performances were outstanding and just congratulations to you all, very well done. And that is it for me, thank you so much.
Can I just add a little comment about the first thing you said? The program on February twenty-fourth about the underage drinking, I believe that's available to high school parents as well, so it's.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Merklinger. Would you do a recap for us, we met with Councilwoman Castellino, Ms. Dr. Cascon and I. But since it's about the baseball fields, I, I trust your analysis much better than mine.
Sure, I'm, I'm not really sure how much is public information just yet, but as many people may be aware. There were plans to fix the infield of the West Orange High, West Orange High School baseball field, it's a. Like the high school football field, it's being sponsored by both the Board of Education and the Town Council. Or the township, it is just to replace, the field is expected, they're a little behind, obviously due to the snow right now. But the expectation is that they are, and from what I understand. As soon as they can get the snow off the infield, they are going to tear it up and it will be replaced, it's going to look gorgeous, I'm sure. And that will be done hopefully in time for the baseball season, which is opening up for pitchers and catchers on March twenty-sixth, and then the rest of the team could start April first with their season. So that's just one of the updates that's happening, as well as Degnan Field, that property, so for folks that are familiar with the Cat Center and the Kitty Park and Degnan Field. That is also undergoing some renovations. And again, kind of a joint project in terms of the baseball softball field, it's. It's utilized by many of our youth programs in town, as well as the high school softball team. And that property, that field is going to be turfed as well. But that is a much larger project. It's a larger scope because the of the Toby Cat Center, as well as the playground, which are also being renovated. So more to come as soon as the weather works with us and we're able to, I guess, our, the construction teams are able to get in to start that work.
Thank you. That was great. I was looking at my notes and then I said, oh, let me ask you to do that for us. And you're talking about removing the snow from the field. If we can keep it off the field, it just keeps coming and coming and coming. Okay, so I'll wrap up a little bit. We are knee-deep in negotiations. This Vice President Tony Cliff and I working with Local Sixty-Eight and Local Sixty-Eight for, you know, we use that term loosely. But that comprises our head custodians, our custodians, our maintenance and technical staff, as well as our bus drivers, part-time bus drivers as well. We're negotiating with the West Orange Education Association and the West Orange Administrators Association. So we are very, very busy. Mr. Rothstein mentioned training. And right now, all of the board should be doing mandated training because we're all in our first, second, or third year. So I know that Ms. Huerta is registered and, as Mr. Rothstein said, Ms. Tony Cliff and and he are also registered. And that would bring myself and Ms. Merklinger up to Governance Three. And Governance Three is all about student achievement. And so we're very busy and I too am attending the leading in chaos. You know, we could all, as you said, do our own little presentation there. We have more business to do. We have a town hall that we need to schedule for the spring. And spring is right around the corner. As part of our board goals, we were hosting two town halls. The second town hall will be as we set our board goals and district goals. But prior to that, we need a training. And we'll have New Jersey School Boards, our Charlene Peterson, as soon as we can find a date to get her in to train the board so that we will be very proficient as we host our town hall and work with our public. Vice President Tony Cliff, Dr. Kascone and I met with the PTA Council. And we talked a little bit about the fact that the district website is about to undergo a big change, right, Dr. Kascone? Yes, ma'am. And we want to have our board page ready to go. So there are a few things that we've talked about, board briefs. This is something that was done with boards in the past, where it is a monthly recap of what the board has done. So we want to return to the board briefs and have those posted. We're going to do little brief profiles of each board member, about five or six sentences about each one of us. And then there's something that I had talked about with the board. We use a lot of educational jargon. I mean, any professional group uses a lot of jargon. And it kind of rolls off of our, off of our lips and tongues. And parents don't necessarily know what we're talking about. Sometimes it's like a foreign language. So I'd like to get that put on our website, as well as the ABCs of education. You know, we we just talked about ESSR, what does that mean? And we use these terms. And so this will be very helpful for our stakeholders. So I think that's it. And we've got Women's History Month coming up right around the corner. And so we'll be excited to see what our schools and students are doing. They've done just a phenomenal job with Black History Month. And, you know, we learn a lot. I saw a movie last night. It's a series, actually, on Netflix. And if anybody has Netflix, I would just suggest it. It's called Amend, A M E N D. And it's about the fourteenth amendment. And it is hosted by Will Smith. It is well done, well done. And I learned a lot and I only watched two of the episodes. So if you're able to catch up with that, I would strongly suggest that you do. And I think our next board meeting, well, I know, I know, our next board meeting is on March third at six thirty. We go into executive session with our public beginning at seven thirty. And if there is.
I, you might want to check that. I'm sorry. I believe this was one of the special meetings and I believe the public part is at six thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is a budget meeting. And so we do start at six thirty. Thank you, Ms. Gravteza.
No problem.
All right. And if there is no further business, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Oh, we always have that little hesitation there.
I hate to see that.
We thank everyone for coming tonight. And all those in favor of adjourning, please let me know. All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Gravteza, and thank you to everyone who hung in here with us tonight. And stay safe and stop doing that snow dance.
Thank you. This is to inform everyone when I end the meeting, it will be both for those on and off camera. And no other business will be conducted. Thank you all and have a great night.
Good night. Good night.